Move on if we've got it. The consultants are available until 12 o'clock and we can let them go when we finish ideally. If not, we'll just move on. And when we finish that, if we need a special meeting, we'll have a special call meeting. And following that, we will have our budgetary session. So, let's get started. Board members, we've gotten a lot of comments from the public and they've all been shared with the consultants. And we'll talk some about that in the session on Tuesday. Is there any objection to asking the consultants to summarize their analysis of the comments to begin with? Because we're gonna leave this meeting giving you some direction on where we want you to go from here. But this will just be the overview.
I want to thank you for inviting us and giving us the opportunity to explain to you how the plans will develop. So my goal today is to explain the process of how we create a Plan A and Plan B. Our main objective has been to balance enrollment across all seven elementary schools. We do know that there are two schools which are overcrowded, overcapacity. One up in the north, Whiting Creek, and one down in the south, Rocky Run. We have prepared two plans using the redistricting criteria provided. And those are two separate plans. There are two configurations on how your attendance areas can be. One of our goals was to keep the neighborhoods together. And I know it wasn't possible all the time, but want to say that we are neutral, not affiliated with any neighborhood. So, we did the best based on the geographies, based on the data that we had. We have also reviewed the community feedback. We have read each and every email that came across to us, either from the board or directly from the community members. And we call it the human factor. We have been totally driven by data and our goals. So, we definitely take the community feedback. And we, as of now, we are looking at our Plans A and B. And we have, we are looking at the feasibility of every suggestion. And we feel with some new edits. In Plan A, we would be moving 400 less kids. And in Plan B, 550 less kids. That does not say that we are going to be able to address each and everything, but this is, and once we work with planning, we show them and we could share it with you as well. So, there has been some talk about feeder patterns. Wanted to address that as well. Currently, your attendance areas, we have schools which are sending students to three different elementary schools. So, we did some analysis and that is the way your current elementary and middle school boundaries are. Our methodology is reiterative. We are using data sets which are provided to us. We are looking at roads, schools, program capacity, neighborhoods, planning units, and we are also looking at parcels in some cases. So with that, I want to start showing you the process. We started, there are several approaches to it. We started with, not with like an east-west, north-south approach. We did not want to disturb students if we didn't have to. We looked at overcrowded schools and there were two, like I said, Whiting Creek and Rocky Run. And then the interesting thing is that you have all the low-capacity schools which are up north, Garrison Will, Park Hill, and even Barrett. So, they're up there and we have the overcrowded schools. There is, once we move, make some changes in one school, there is a ripple effect that affects the other schools. Okay? With that, I'm going to show you. And what you see on the screen is your map of Stafford County, your current elementary And just to show you, I'm going to zoom in into Whiting Creek. So you can see the major thoroughfares. And you can see the other roads. You can see the neighborhoods just like we had in the maps. The neighborhoods are in dashed symbol. So here, what we are going to do is look at, evaluate. So we'll begin with the Whiting Creek, which I said is at 96.93 for the data that we have. So, we will identify the neighboring schools that can provide relief to Whiting Creek. So if you look at the neighboring schools, we have Stafford, we have Brent, we have Garrison Will, Parkridge, Hampton Oaks, and we have Worms. These are the schools which can possibly help Whiting Creek. So now, we are going to go and look at the planning units which are adjacent to these neighboring schools. So here, I'm going to start looking. I'll show you how we go across. So if I look at this, this particular planning unit has only five students. So it does not help me much. And I just want to focus on some data for Whiting Creek. And if you look at it, currently it has 300 students more than its capacity. So I hope you all can see it. So I'm looking at 300 students that I need to move out of Whiting Creek.
I just want to clarify, since we're saving this for transparency, 300 more than capacity is 300 more than the target capacity, not the program capacity, correct?
No, we are using program capacity.
So 300 more, what is the program capacity that Whiting Creek's in? I didn't realize there were 300.
It's 978.
978? So do we have 1,278?
You have 1,272 students.
You're looking at 22.
Keep in mind, we're looking at 22.
Okay, all right. Then that's, I just need some clarification.
Because people are going to go, 300 extra kids in that building? How is that possible?
All right, so four years from now.
Yes, four years.
Correct. Is that what you're going to use as your criteria?
That's what we use in, they can Plan A and Plan B.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, but...
No problem. We just wanted to be consistent because that's what...
No, that's fine.
Okay? So here, we looked at this planning unit, doesn't help us much because it has only five students. So we go around and very few, we are looking at larger numbers.
Can I start? Can I start another clarification?
Sure.
So when you're looking around at these planning units, are you also looking at their capacity projected in four years?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're looking at projected capacity, not current number of students in that area?
Okay.
Yeah. So here, and we have already said, you know, that Garrison Will is right here and Garrison Will can take students because it has low capacity. We have Parkridge, we have Hampton Oaks, we have Worms. So, we have already spoken about that. So let's take a look at this particular planning unit. It has 33 students and it could help us some. So, but before we make any move, we want to look at the neighborhoods. And as I zoom in, you'd probably be able to see the parcels as well in the streets. And we have labeled the streets. So this particular planning unit gives me 33 and that is four years out. So I'm going to go and see what else can I take. So I look at this, and now together, if you notice the number here, together I have 98 students. That's good. But now let's look at one more so that we can have it whole as a piece. So that is 124 students. And what is the closest school for, the closest attendance area? Looks like Garrison Will here. So what we will do is now we want to look at the neighborhoods. So I'm going to show you that the neighborhood here, and let me make sure that I have my subdivisions.
Excuse me, the closest attendance area because of what?
Because of proximity adjacency.
Because I'm looking at your map and the opposite direction, the school right below.
See, either we have proximity and look at your existing boundary. So I have Garrison Will here. And then I have Brent on this side. So those are my two choices. Make sense?
It does if you don't consider all the other ones and how they're going to feed into it. Because we're looking at this countywide. So if we just look at, you know, where you can move these, I would think it's almost like the dominoes. You have to start at one end and see what fits in there and then move forward. It's a different approach than I would have thought.
The approach here is, you know, like I said, we look at all the planning units which are on the boundary. And then we see, and right now we haven't made any change, we are trying to assess who can take these students. And then I want to go in and look at the neighborhood to make sure that I have the neighborhood as one piece. So here, I look at the neighborhood and this is Augustine, North. So we can either send them to Brent. Brent is, looks like it's closer. Garrison Will looks it's further out, but they are the ones which are adjacent. Keep in mind that we do not want to just leave them in silence and just send them somewhere where there is no adjacency.
Or perhaps leave them at Whiting Creek because it looks like Whiting Creek is actually the closest school.
It is the closest school, but keep in mind, you know, that it is, we need to move some Yeah, and Garrison Will has the capacity. So we can say, okay, the neighborhood is together, the street looks like, you know, we have a connection if we were to come from Garrison Will. And let's see if we can make this move. So what we will do is we will move these 124 students. We have a choice to make. We can either send them to Brent or Garrison Will. So what we will look at Brent, we'll say that, okay, at four years down the road, if we do nothing to Brent, Brent would be at 92 percent. Okay? So the choice seems like Garrison Will. So we will go with that. That's a great idea.
What's the idea? That's great.
The idea is that let's show all the possibilities before we make any moves.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds like a great idea.
Okay. So we listed these planning units, but we still don't want to make any decision yet. We want to keep moving. So we'll come over here and this particular planning unit, if you can see well from your, from the screen here, is not a good move. Because this planning unit contains the school and we obviously cannot move them out of Whiting Creek. So, the decision is made right there. No matter how many students it has, we cannot move them. Then we'll move on and see what are these neighborhoods or these planning units that we can move. So we have a planning unit here. So once again, we are going to check if there are any neighborhoods that we are splitting. And we find that there are two neighborhoods. So we are going to figure out which ones they are. It's Arbor Lane and this is Marshall Estates. And just to make sure we are not splitting them, it's right there, it's a whole piece. So, not a problem. And this one is a whole piece and we could probably move it. Okay? But we are not moving, we are going through this decision process that we went through. So we'll go down here and I'm going to zoom out a tad bit. And since this just gives me 40 students, I could explore the possibility of another neighboring planning unit. So I'm going to go ahead and see what about this planning unit. So this planning unit has some students and it's adjacent. So we could look at that and I'm going to go and see if we have split any neighborhoods. So no, this is Amicay and it's all one piece, so it could be a possibility. So we go to the next one. And this one seems like has just one neighborhood here, Berkshire. Then we go, let's see what, about the next one. And this one we cannot use because it has the school. So, we would not move it because otherwise this would mean moving the school out of its attendance area, which is not going to happen.
What are you saying about the, I don't know what that next one is? The one next to Berkshire?
Which one?
The one next to Berkshire, you said you couldn't move?
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
It's under construction.
Okay, so there's nobody there? And you can't move them?
The reason if you...
Or you choose not to move them?
No, no. We can't move them because if you look at the planning unit, it's sealed, it has its school. So we cannot assign them somewhere else.
Ms. Yee, in that vein, I think you're going with where I am.
This came up in the high school redistricting and that included areas that had, that were going to be developed. And we talked about how those, it's a large planning unit and I understand that, but if there are parts of it that is slated for future development, that was sort of my point the other night. Can we move something that's not there yet and slice that out? And I know that that's, I mean, that was the information I asked for on Tuesday was, what are the ones that are coming? Because we are using projected, so there's probably potentially if that's, I don't know if that's...
Do you know what the projected number is for that planning unit?
The projected numbers, I don't think it includes much because if you look at it, currently there are three students in there and projected to be five.
Okay. But it's not the project.
Well, but Tom is, having looked at a lot of this, I have not seen a lot of the projected development being included in some of this four-year expanded, just based on, when I already looked up the stuff last night and I have not studied it. I think that is something we really need to get a permission for us. Because it looked like a large geographic area.
It's a bad idea.
Well, but, ma'am, do you know what, the planning unit that she's talking about, next to Berkshire, that she says is in the same as Whiting Creek and must go all the way up to...
Is that the dominoes or Whiting Creek?
That's a subdivision?
Say that again?
Is that one subdivision?
That's one planning unit.
But how many acres is it?
I don't know how many acres.
It looks big.
But, so the reason why that is large is most likely because of trying to accomplish the 30 residential unit, you may have a statistical significance for the projection. That's why sometimes they'll be stretched out, but you see it's not very dense.
Not now.
Right now. Right. And so that's, projections are calculated annually, so they need 30 units ideally to be statistical significant. And that's not a set and stone rule, that's just the general...
It looks such, it looks like such a large area and when you say, well, this one can't be moved because it touches a school, but it's no farther away than, you know, other ones are within a mile. It's just, it seems like...
In the, in the high school redistricting, we went ahead and moved Whiting Creek, I believe, to north, that I think the feeder pattern here might be of significance.
Can I ask a question about one of the, actually it's a community. It's Augustine. It is built out, there's no new, no building going on, no nothing. And just one of the APUs in Augustine goes from 22 to 65. How is that possible?
So that's where the projections look at all the planning units countywide, not just one. So you can't populate or you can't project the population focusing on one specific planning unit. A couple of things come into play there. The model looks at historical growth in that surrounding area as well, not just in each specific planning unit. Where that, in the model, there are certain areas, planning areas. That planning area is along the 630 corridor, which is currently and has been historically an extremely high-growing, fast-growing area of the county. So the reason why you're showing projected growth where you may think that there will not be growth is just the model saying, okay, this is a fast-growing area, it's favoring, the model's favoring young families. So as a student turnover occurs in that planning unit, it's assuming young families are moving in.
That doesn't seem true though. There's not true numbers then. So how are we basing moving people based on what the model is looking at overall? Because that, that's ridiculous, 22 to 65. These are over half a million dollar homes. These are not young families moving in there.
Thank you, Ms. Yee, and that follows up on my question, Mr. Thomas, the other day. Especially where you've got three planning units in Augustine and two of them have a modest growth, I would say. You know, they're in the twenties, they may go to the higher in the twenties, maybe they're in the mid twenties, low twenties now, they may go to higher twenties, low thirties. But this particular one that Ms. Yee can just mention goes from 23 to 65. And that, you know, that's, and I get it, that overall, you know, it's reliable and accurate. But if you live in that planning unit, it's a problem if it's not accurate for that one.
So I had the consultant go back. I specifically asked him about that one. And he went through everything, you know, and the kind of checkpoints throughout the model. And he's confident, he's expressed confidence that it's, the model's working as intended in that area.
Wow, okay. So here's the problem I have. You know, you said these are the assumptions of the model. And we all know what they say about when you assume. And so I'm just really a little, I need, I don't know if you can clarify this to make me feel comfortable with thinking that there will be 60 houses in there, 60 children in there in four years? But if you're that wrong, I mean, if...
65.
65. That's a real problem. So I just don't quite understand how we can be using these numbers with any kind of confidence.
I think this goes to exactly what we discussed when these projections were given to us. And I know that the board was very happy that we are, you know, we're within 1 percent, but we are not within 1 percent in our individual areas. And I understand there may just not be a way to deal with that. But this came up, when we discussed those, and it was something I made and I know the board was thrilled with that. But when you pulled them out and looked at individual schools, there could be hundreds of student shifts. And I get that we are good on the county. When, in the year of redistricting, the aggregate number is less important to me than really almost localized. And I know at one point we had talked about north-south, east, what, like the quadrants. I would almost feel even better if we could have some kind of growth by quadrant because this aggregate to me, I think I have the same concerns that you all do, but I'm trying to think, how do we get it? We may not get it by APU, I mean, we'd love to have it, but can we at least get it regionally? Because that would say to me, this is where growth is coming, it's in the northwest of the, I don't know.
I mean, would it make sense to use the numbers, the current numbers, and then look at where there are developments and then do our own's rather than, I'm just trying to figure out how you give instructions to consultants if you're not happy with the numbers we've given them?
So, I just want to talk about the basics. And I go back to the O'Leary offer laws. And even though they were not exact, I think there was some science behind the, you know, a single-family home produces 1.25 children. You know, it's hard to tell if they're elementary or... So, yeah, without actually doing the analysis on like which planning unit, you know, what it has now and then what it's expected to have. And then if we're looking at a four-year build-out for a community that's empty, I mean, that four-year build-out may equate to two kids or zero kids if we're, if the criteria is 24, 25, or 22, 23, or... So, yeah, right now it doesn't look like, when you go by quadrant, it really does affect negatively the schools. And just like for Augustine, that was just brought up. I mean, it's a pretty, you know, when you're off 125 percent of your number, it really doesn't help when we're individually trying to put the kids in those schools. I just...
I agree, particularly when you're using your basis for moving the students as to how many can I move out? So if you have a higher number, you're more a target for getting moved. So I... Now, I go back and I know Ms. Yee wanted to see the process. Do you want to see, do you want us to follow through with this process?
Sure.
Okay, all right. I'll hold mine till later because I have, I have questions about whether there could be a different process that may take a different approach which would help with the proximity, which would be starting at one end and working up. We'll go through, we're going to go through...
What I do want to say is that while...
We should try to wrap this up at a maximum in terms of the process by 10 o'clock because we've got a lot to talk about. And you're only available till noon. Is that, we will support, spend another half hour on the process?
True.
Yeah, no more. I got the process now. Go ahead.
All I want to say is while we have projections and estimations, and the way projections are done, it's a standard process. And when we work at that level of geography, they could be off a little bit here and there. But our current numbers is what we started with and then we are looking now. Yeah, I do have current numbers as well, so we can look at them as well. So here, going back to the same neighborhood, we have 134 kids that we could move out. But if you look currently, you have 99 students now. So if you worry about the projections, we can always look at your numbers now, which is 99, which is a pretty good number.
And so, yes, and just kind of going back to that old, that, whoever came up with that offer, not to go back to the offer, the estimation of kids in the household, maybe we could come up with something where the, this is the kids now, we're projecting at 135, so if it's 90, maybe the difference between 99 and 135 may be more accurate than all the way high or going all the way low. Maybe some sort of, you know...
Sir, the county, the county conjunction schools, division staff developed the student generation factor for new neighborhoods. We used to use an average across the county for student generation at both, all three levels. But now we have identified, working with the county's planning staff, we identify a group of new neighborhoods that just recently get built out. And we developed that student generation based on actual data of what kind of families are moving into those type of homes. And so we come up with a student generation. And that's the student generation factor we use as part of the projection analysis.
How close have you gotten to the being accurate on that, basing on that?
Well, again, as, as we've talked about this several times, the last five years we provided that data and it went from, went from triple digits, 180-ish, you know, compared to actual, and we're talking aggregate, division-wise. And I know there's concerns down at the school level. But aggregate-wise, it went from 181 to 176 to 160. And then it went drop down, the last two years it was 24 and 13 respectively, which is pretty aggregate, pretty accurate from the divisional. And at the, at the different levels, we have that. At the elementary school, I think we were triple digits, 113, or I think somewhere around there this past year compared to our projection.
Off, as in more or less?
Oh, I'd have to look it up, but I think it was more. We had more, 113 more students projected than our, I can get that.
So for the past five years, your, your accuracy has always been, you had more kids?
No, one year we had less.
One year you had less?
Yes, ma'am. Over the five years.
Over five years?
Four years.
You had more than...
Yes, ma'am. I just know there were four of the same and one different, you know, I have to go back and look, but they were very close. But down to the school level, to answer your question, Ms. Yee, down to the school level, we have some schools that we nailed it.
Ms. Yee, yes, John.
Ms. Yee, to answer your question, at some schools we've nailed it, we've been within one or two students. And other schools we missed it by, you know, double digits, 30, 35. So, so the accuracy of the, of the model obviously is very high at the aggregate level.
Right.
And as you drill down to the 30 schools that we have, sometimes it, there is some differences.
So I'll give you back to my question that Ms. Healy just asked a little bit ago, is there, is there a difference? So I'll give you back some question that Ms. Healy just asked a little bit ago. Is there, is there a different way that we can, can we work with the county to look at, look at it on the school level to kind of improve those numbers at the school level to match that with the aggregate?
In my opinion, I believe that the tool we use currently is the most accurate way to project students all the way down to the school level. Are there, are there opportunities for us to improve? Absolutely. Every time that we work with the model and work with a consultant that provides it, helps us with that model, we can improve, no doubt. I, I will tell you flat out, if we had another three weeks to QC, the model, we probably would have discovered one or two mistakes that were made. So it's a matter of staff, time, and time to do this progress at the end of the day. I mean, the longer that you spend on a particular effort and you QC it, you continue to QC it, the better the accuracy and the, the higher opportunity you have to catch glitches, especially in a very complex methodology, modeling methodology that we employ as part of the projection. So...
Do we have three weeks in our, in our calendar to?
So again, we were pushed, if you recall, if you recall, we were pushed pretty hard to have the data available for the projection analysis. One November, we were pushed because there were other things that were driving that. Could we have used more time? Absolutely. And the more time we have on a product, the, the higher accuracy, the better product, the better quality of the product.
I understand, but let me just, I didn't get the answer to my question. Do we have three weeks in our calendar to make that happen?
No, I think the board knows, I think the board knows that we were pushed to have it by early November.
Well, we get that. But what Ms. Egan's asking is, do we have time now to go back and, and improve the accuracy?
Other projections?
Yes.
If, if so directed, if, if the board directs-
Do we have time in the calendar before making a decision?
Yeah, the answer is yes. Okay, so let, so hold on. No, that's, that was good, Ms. Egan. And, and...
But I, can I ask the question?
Okay, go.
So, so I don't know. My sense of something like this is that it is kind of a rolling window. So if you keep working for three weeks on what, whatever the information was, aren't you also going to be getting new information in? That you would start working on next year?
No, ma'am. We, we established a deadline and it was, I believe, first September for certain data that comes in that we use. All I'm saying is a QC process. That's all I'm saying. To go back and QC it, we're not manipulating, changing any input of the data. We're just looking at the process. And, you know, that, anytime you have more time to look at the process, a very complex process, you can improve the quality potentially.
I'm just saying that, that you put new data in every year. Like you had a schedule and you have a deadline that you put in new data. And alls I'm saying is, as you are working on the old data, eventually you need to start working on the new data.
And we do that on your basis.
But at a certain point, you have the cutoff so that you could work the data. But my question is, and I think I asked this before, either Matt, John, or I'm saying that you can't answer, or Priti, if, if we reduce the APUs to smaller, does that correlate to what they're asking in terms of looking at it at the lower level where it's coming into the, the school neighborhood itself? Does that, does that-
To, to my understanding, the planning units is currently more-
As small as they could go?
Oh, they could go smaller, but they all, they correlate to the neighborhood, the school that they feed into.
If we make them smaller, does that help at all when, when you say this is a base, this is a big one and make you feel like you have dragged the whole, the whole unit because it's one? If it was smaller, would you do it any different if it was smaller?
See, we are working with the planning units, with those parameters. So, and right now we have four years out, but you know, we could look like just two years out. But we are working with that geography and that is what we're doing.
I think, Ms. Young, I think Matt tried to answer that question earlier.
Yeah.
And I think it's to, when we went from two hundred and eleven-ish to four hundred and whatever planning units that we're using now, the idea, he had some, he had some goals and parameters associated with doing that. And to make them statistically important was to have so many students in there that if you were to use-
Run it to you.
And, and I will tell you, I will tell you that there are some that we don't need that, you know, because we just couldn't. And so, yes.
Good. And my final question would be, if we are projecting four years out, did we remove the developments that are not going to be developed in the, in the next four years? Are they removed or have we counted those in all of this work?
Okay, so I think the question is-
Oh, sorry. Here we go. Sorry.
And I think the answer is at year five, in the projection analysis, thereabouts, we start, we looked at some of those neighborhoods that are on the books, like the Cavan Track and West Lake, it's certain that are, that are approved for development, but there are no, there are nothing in, in the works to get those going right now, right? So we had to, we had to include them in the projections in the ten-year window, or at least we felt that. And that was an assumption that we told the board that we were going to do. We put them in the latter part of the projection analysis because we wanted to account for them. And then we, we assumed a certain build out associated with that. And that's, we've used, we've used that.
So how, how did that work though, Mike? How, how did that work when you say you assumed in the latter part, the numbers are the numbers?
Working with the county planning department, Jeff Harvey and his team, we said, and we'll use the Cavan Track in the Whitewater Peninsula as an example. We said, okay, the Cavan Track is approved for, you know, a hundred homes, let's just say a hundred homes. We said, in year five of the projection-
Year seven.
Year seven, we said, we're going to assume that they start to develop that track because we have to account for it somewhere in the model, right? Because they're approved and we don't want to not-
So the numbers are not reflected in the-
In the first, in the front end. I would confidently say that they're not reflected heavily. There may be, you know, something on the edge of year four, but I think we are confident that they're all on the back end of the projection.
So we, we take a look at anticipated bill rates, we contact as many developers as we can, and then we run it by county planning to make sure any inside info that they may have on these, these approved developments. And then we, we fill in an anticipated growth by year and we send that to the consultant who does the projections.
Madam Chair, so, Madam Chair, so it seems, you know, everyone's been working hard on this process and not only has our bridge, but our, our team, at the state and the county and our team at the division. And I think we all understand that. We thank you guys for your hard work. I, I think there's a consensus on the board to, to move on. We under, I think we understand the process and we can ask questions by, by exception from here on out. But I think there, there's consensus on the board, Madam Chair, to kind of move on to maybe giving some more direction for some other plans. And I'm not going to be giving that direction. I'm going to leave it up to some of the other board members who voiced concerns if it's okay. Is it, so is it okay, Madam Chair, leaving off the process?
Absolutely. We're done. We, we understand what was done. Now we want to talk about what other approaches we can take rather than take an overcrowded school and see where you can move them to, to actually look at kind of the proximity and some of the other issues. Ms. DeGee?
So if I may, I, and I'll just let the board know, I do have to leave at ten. So I'm going to jump right in. But what I would really love to see is, so when we decide to do a countywide redistricting, my assumption was that there would be a blank slate and that we are creating something that is better than what we started out with. Something better in terms of, we're improving our feeder patterns, we're improving the proximity, we're, so, so we're improving all of those, all of those seventeen criteria. We're taking those and, and I know we can't touch all of them, but we're taking those and we're looking at it and saying, are we getting a product that is better for our students than what we started with? So that's the first thing. And, and what I would like to see is again, a blank slate and, and as Ms. Hazard stated, take each school and, and work your way out. And, and then, you know, the outliers, you know, kind of, I think we all understand what I'm trying to say. I'd like to see us kind of start from there and see what kind of products you get.
When we talked at the board meeting the other night, Ms. Hazard suggested looking at the radius around the school. And that would certainly mean the first criteria we talked about, and I'm not prioritizing, but to me, proximity is my number one. But that's just, just for me. But if we started at the school, maybe you could explain, Ms. Hazard, what you talked about. It makes sense to me.
I know my board members received my data download thoughts because otherwise I couldn't move on to like the next topic. And I understand that we do have some schools that are on top of each other. So I know that is going to be a challenge for, for all of us. However, however, I tried to put as a caveat and email to my board members, let's start with the, the students that are currently in, easily comes to mind Rock Hill and Garrisonville, their radius is going to be very similar because they're sitting right next to each other. But for me, in an instance like that, well, let's start with who's in there now. And then we sort of move out from there because my, my thought really is that, and I, my hope, I guess, maybe that's, I know we shouldn't put that as our primary. I do believe that seventy five to eighty percent of our students at a minimum should stay where they are because hopefully they are close to their schools. And I'm hoping under that approach, we will try to then see where it doesn't make sense.
I'm sorry, Molly, did you say that you wanted everybody to stay where they are right now because they're in closer?
No, I was saying, when, when, when you do a radius around two schools that are sitting next to each other, the radius is going to be the same. And so there was probably the question of, well, who do you pick? I'm like, keep the people in their current schools there as the radius.
Access Hampton Oaks and-
Well, she, she's talking to Garrisonville, Rock Hill.
That was the one that just came to mind easier because the, the radius would be the same.
Right. And an example, that would be in one of the plans, part of Rock Hill was moving over to Garrisonville. And, and it was a part of the subdivision. I don't even, you know, I'm not, I'm not criticizing that at this point, but that made no sense to me. And certainly it made no sense to the people that lived in that district, that they were already at a school that was under capacity. And we're adding to that and their neighborhood was being split to send them to a school that's, would be in the same radius, but that's-
So that's insane.
I would like to say something here. That is balancing, okay?
Balancing, oh, okay.
Balancing in Roman. But I do understand, and that is what we say, you know, that when we went to the town hall meetings, it was the human factor. And it seemed like, you know, because your Rock Hill and Garrisonville are so close to each other that we felt that if, it's, they're just right next to each other. So we thought in order to use Garrison's capacity, Garrisonville's capacity, and then pass it shifted down to Brent, relieve these schools, we thought it would be okay. But obviously because they're just right next to each other.
The human factor, as you call it, that is very important because the human factor is that people have been at the school forever, at least since the school opened. They're part of a neighborhood that is being split to send some to another school. Where is, is the travel time going to be different? No, it's the same. But I think, getting back to Ms. Hazard's point, why move someone if they're already there? And now the balancing, and that's, that was my biggest concern about both of these plans. It looked like at one point you were like reaching out here to take some kids and, and another example, and I, I'll use my district because that's the one that I'm most familiar with in terms of the plans. We pulled people from, you know, practically in, in the backyard of Rock Hill and Garrisonville up on, near Furnace Road on six ten to go all the way down to Kate Waller Barrett, which is going against traffic morning and evening, and almost five miles away.
This, this area? We did a-
Yeah, that, that was, and, and the people were right across the street from the school and were, were passing Park Ridge, which is closer. And, you know, we've got Rock Hill and Garrisonville that are closer and Park Ridge. I'm, I'm not asking you to defend it because I know what you did. You used it to balance. And that's, that's what I thought. That, that's a concern, you know, I, I have personally is reaching out to balance. The, the balancing, in, in my view, may not be as critical depending on, you know, where the projections are. And we may not have to meet a magic number because these are people's lives and it is the human factor. And I know people will adjust because my child got redistricted in the third grade and we were right across the street from Park Ridge. We got sent to Garrisonville because there were too many students. So we adjusted. But, you know, if, when you have to go so much farther to go to school, there needs to be, you know, a rationale. And in, in a case where you've got empty seats, I, I can justify it.
And those are the changes that we got the feedback from the community and those are the changes that we have made. And we would be able to share with you Plan A edits and Plan B edits once we discuss with planning. Because we went through those and we said, okay, let's get the students from somewhere else and not these. But I do want to emphasize, you know, because this is redistricting. And I know some of the things are because of balancing, like you said, but somebody will have to move. Of course. Regardless of how it may sound, but-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to ask, changing a little bit of Plan A, changing a little bit of Plan B, and then formulating two or three more options for us to consider. Or how are we on the calendar? We're talking about timeline again, calendar. Are we going to be able to do all this and, and get this done? Or are we wasting our time here and can we, are we, do we need to change the discussion on moving this to next year? Let's throw it out on the table.
Well, we, we have made a commitment to the supervisors that we were going to do a countywide redistricting.
But, but I'm, I'm not going to disrupt all of these kids' lives with all of these question marks that, that we've all thrown out there and just for the sake of, you know, a commitment is what we said to the supervisors. So that's, that's my question is, are we running out of time? Because we still have to communicate everything that you've come up with now back out to the, to our constituents.
Well, the, the commitment is, is one point. But the other one is, we need to do something because it's not fair to these overcrowded schools.
Correct.
We cannot continue to have overcrowded schools, particularly with the new preschool coming into being. And we'll have those twenty empty classrooms in the schools. So the timing is good. The question is, can we, your, your question is, can we make, do this process and do it in a, a equitable manner?
Yeah, I just feel like we keep going in circles and circles when the clock is ticking and we've got all of these unknowns that haven't been answered yet.
So my, my comment here is, at one point in time, I've mentioned to my board that we should have a backup plan. And I'm sure you all remember that. Because we do have North Star where we moved all these kids already in. We have New Moncur coming and we have Winding Creek overcrowded. And we have Hampton Oaks, the way how it looks, it cannot continue. So we do need to do something with that minimally. And if we're not going to go across and do redistricting across the board, we need to come up with that plan.
And can I jump in?
Sure.
With another thought. When we talk about commitments and our commitment to the people across the street about redistricting, in our chair, vice chair meeting, we had some discussion about Ferry Farm. And the supervisors have been a little dragging their feet to give us the actual, like, yes, we're doing this. So I'm wondering with this redistricting, what we think we're doing for the children of Ferry Farm? And is this redistricting an opportunity to take care of that if the supervisors are, are not able to, to fund this renovation or fund the improvement to the basement? And it occurs to me that we could talk about taking Ferry Farm out of the inventory at this point in time if there isn't the money for the renovation. Or we could talk about reducing the capacity of Ferry Farm so that the basement is no longer used if we're not able to do something about the basement.
The basement isn't in the projections.
It's not in the projections at all for resource, the resource rooms are not-
The resource, the basement rooms are counted as available resources.
So they should not be-
We'd have to take out classrooms to, to replace them. So it would reduce the capacity.
Oh, the resource, the replacement resource room?
So how many rooms do you have? Two or three?
In the ba, at Ferry Farm, I believe it's three resource rooms.
So that's seventy five, seventy eight students?
Yeah, so right now it's, the, the capacity calculator is saying you can use three or four basement rooms.
Yeah, I'll just tell you for me personally, as a parent who has a child with, with bad allergies and who has, who was gifted and so would have been down in a basement room like that. And as the sister of somebody who is severely dyslexic, that his reading would have been done down in that basement. To me, it's unconscionable that we keep doing this. And if we don't have the funds to support improving that situation, then we should correct the capacity. And in the redistricting, say that Ferry Farm will have fewer students.
But that's a choice that the board may, I, I don't want to get into the Ferry Farm one because I think we have a much broader commitment we have to fix that today. I'm willing to argue the, the stuff on, on Ferry Farm, but unless we're going forward- but unless we're going forward, we don't even need to have this discussion. Because we can pull out each one of these schools and make our own arguments on capacity. You all know how I feel about the capacity figures. I don't agree with them at all. But I'm moving on beyond that because I think we made a commitment. We're going to work on this. Whether we end up meeting a deadline that we have either imposed on ourselves or not is on us. But to sit here and throw up our hand if it's too difficult today, I'm not willing to do that today.
No, no, I'm just saying, as we move, if we're moving forward and we're talking about having potentially Plan Bs, alls I'm saying is, if we go ahead, assuming that Ferry Farm gets done and it doesn't get done, we've missed the opportunity in the capacity that we currently have to handle that situation. So...
It's my understanding that... I'm not going to... I will leave my comments on this in a different... Because we've got to move on on the bigger picture right now. And Dwayne, I'm not trying to be rude with you, but this is... We've talked about trailers being there. We've talked about all kinds of stuff. So there are lots of options on each of our schools of what we're going to do over the next couple of years.
Potentially, the capacity of Ferry Farms, if we don't count the basement, would be at least ten percent less, right?
It would be lower.
Well, what's the...
You always say it wasn't counted in the past.
I think we all agree that all of this needs to happen. Number one, the basement can't be included as capacity because it's, no one is even allowed to be down there.
No, they're using... It's not allowed for more than an hour of time.
It's not allowed for more than an hour of time.
Okay, well, tell me what it is real quick because we do need to move on to the bigger picture.
The school administration has chosen to use the basement space for resource use because there are some concerns with daylighting. It's not the best space. It is a hell... It is not an unsafe environment. Now, there is some code issues that we've all talked about, that outside air, enough outside air. So that is a concern, and we've expressed that. We do not feel that there is a immediate indoor air quality issue. And we tested down there numerous times. It wasn't... It was back in 2004 when we corrected some foundation issues that we just had some mold that was in there that we eradicated. But it is not the best case, not the best space. I'm not saying it's a good space. It's a basement space that doesn't have really good daylighting.
Okay, but can we as a board just agree that we are not going to include the basement for enrollment and then move on?
No, yeah, so I was saying...
Because how do you feel about that?
Yeah, Jamie's totally correct. That Scott is correct, everybody's correct, but you're not putting home room classes down there. That's not a place for kids to spend all day for teaching and learning.
Okay, so there it is. Can we agree as a board that we're not going to include it at for enrollment capacity figures and move on? Because it is the only school we have.
Yeah, so just, no, I don't want to... I didn't want to belabor this either, but I thank you for bringing it up. But everyone knows that, you know, we did have an outside person come in. The architect said, we need to get this basement done. So there's two things. There's that, and reducing those classrooms, bringing them upstairs is going to reduce, you know, twenty-six, twenty-eight times three, right? On the capacity, so I do agree with that. And the second thing is, though, even under the current, if you do go with current A or B, remember, Ferry Farm additionally gets ninety percent... Goes to ninety percent and ninety-four percent capacity in each of the two plans as presented. So here we have the worst school by far in the division, elementary schools for our kids' health and learning. And then we have environmental, right? Environmentally. And then we have, we're adding a hundred-plus students. So that, so there's two things. So either one of those, we can talk about at a later date because everyone has their issues with their schools. But that's just one issue that I will be making sure that we try to take care once we do figure out what we're doing with this redistricting.
Well, I mean, do we have a commitment from across the street that we're getting the ten point eight million dollars for the renovation of Ferry Farm?
No.
No, it's going to be on their agenda the end of February, didn't they say?
Correct. And a second, yeah, fourth, fourth Tuesday in February, we'll go again to present again.
Okay, I'm just saying that we might want to at least put in the back of our brains that if the end of February, that doesn't come through...
But the air quality isn't even in what we were...
No, this is a ten point eight for the renovation that I'm talking about.
But even, I think that we'll get that, Adam.
We haven't gotten it yet.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, I think there was a commitment from them. But we chose not to do the air quality in the basement. So I think that's the challenge, that we can change that if we get the money.
No, this board actually, well, that's not correct, I don't think. Because this board actually voted to send the one point nine basement over to the supervisors.
But that didn't have the air quality, I don't think.
Yes, it is. It's part of the one point eight.
The one point eight was, a million dollars was the air quality. Four fifty to nine fifty, whatever that was, was the air quality. So anyway, long story short is, I'm willing to move on. I really appreciate that. I'm hoping Mr. Tom Cohen, our brand new elected supervisor over there, is moving this along for Ferry Farm, who helped him tremendously get elected to this position. And he is going to get reelected, we hope, in November coming, right? So enough said.
We've only got the consultant here until the news.
Right, I agree.
Okay, so moving forward, where do you want to go with a new plan for redistricting? Because I do tend to agree that if we make a Plan A adjustment and a Plan B adjustment, and then we come back and discuss it, I personally would really like to see a fresh slate and a new plan.
I think that's important because there are several criteria. And I'm sorry to say to the board, if you've read what I thought. For us, it's visual. We may be able to say a radius approach. My gosh, we looked at it, it moved five thousand kids. Like I said, I'm not going to probably approve that. But it at least allows us to go to our constituents who the majority of the comments I am getting is about either their neighborhood or being close to a school. I would want to be able to say to those who wrote me and say, we ran a plan that we really tried to keep everybody that was within whatever we say. And look, it moved more kids. That at least is a way for me to say, we did try that. And we tried that as a main criteria. And maybe, I don't think that's a waste of work. I don't, but that is up to the board to decide.
And then, let me real quick, because I do have to get out of here. So the last thing I would say is, I don't know that we could... I don't know, maybe we can, but I don't know right now that we can look at our seventeen criteria and say, well, these are the most important. What I'd like to see is, when a plan is done, I would like to see an explanation of how it has been improved upon, how the continuity, how the feeder patterns, you know, and if it wasn't improved upon, why. So it's not that we can sit here and say, this, this, and this is the most important. Because all of those things are criteria, and they're all important. But if we can't improve upon one of them, why and show me why? So that's just my opinion and...
Yeah, and some of the criterias are more important than others simply because there's money involved, associate economic issues involved. And that is important because we want equity and we want equality among all students. So those two are important to me. And of course, they're neighbor, people in neighborhoods together.
I have just a question for the board in general. Before we even began this process, or at the very beginning of this process, I thought we had agreed, or that people were concerned about moving people who had just been moved or multiple moves. And I've heard from two particular neighborhoods. One is Ridge Point, that, and maybe you all have heard and maybe you've already thought about adjusting it, where they were at Conway, then they got moved to Grafton, and now one proposal has them moving to Ferry Farm. And so you have actual children who, you know, I've talked to at least one parent who said, this will be my child's third elementary school if this plan goes through. So one child three times. Yeah.
So...
I'm not sure if that's right.
Yeah, so...
No, I think probably there's a few neighborhoods. And there used to be one up in the northern Mandpeter's Landing, which I guess is in Garrisonville. Because of where it's situated for schools, you know, it could go this way, it could go that way. This is way in the past, but, yeah, east of you. You know, there's ones that are, they're close. And they say, okay, we'll move them and move them here. And they get targeted almost, not intentionally. But that's happened, so I believe that is the case. I've seen it.
I have the same concern about the special education program too.
Well, this is... And then the Manor at England Run, for some reason, was the only subdivision moved two years ago. And now we're proposing to move it out of Foundness to Margaret Brent, which is eleven.
Months away.
So I just, I just wondered where the board was with this group stuff.
And that ties in with the proximity. The proximity, there is no way I could support moving a school eleven miles away when there's three or four schools that are closer, so...
So Madam Chair, I, no, I've heard and investigated. I think everybody's said a little something that I think we're all in agreement with. So I'm going to get back to process, Madam Chair. So I think we do want a Plan C, if I'm hearing everyone correctly, at least a Plan C, right? And, you know, Mrs. Hazard talked about, and many other boarders talked about, like, number one criteria for Plan C may be, start with a radius approach with the school. Take into account, you know, who's in there now when we do the radius approach. Number three, outliers. Even when you go through those two issues, you either need more people in the school to get it up or you need to extricate the kids back to another school.
I'm sorry, before you, sorry, before you move on, when you say the radius approach and looking at who's in there now, what does that mean?
Okay, wait, what you saying, look at, can you... Before you...
I'm just going to know because I'm not going to vote on something that I don't understand.
Well, we're not, but if we can go through our comments and then write your questions down, and then when, once we get all the comments, then we can ask questions back. Because I don't want to interrupt this process of thought.
And I know, and I know, so this is, folks, this is... So then we have our outliers. Once we, who's in there now and the radius approach, then you have your outliers. You might have to take kids that, you know, even with those two things, there may be only sixty-five percent in the school possibly. And so then we look at that, then we look at the islands. Like, for an example, there's the islands that she spoke about, Ferry Farm and the other ones. Which we should still try to fix that as well as a criteria. And then that's when, then you probably might have a fifty-five percent product, maybe even more. And then, and then you start going into your criteria one by one and examining the criteria against each school. And so I would see to take care of issues like Ms. Young might say, has said over and over again, she's concerned about, you know, the diversity and the free and reduced. And those are one of the seventeen criterias. So once you've done your plan that gives you that sixty percent look, and it still isn't quite right, each school has the seventeen criteria kind of weighed. And this is work, right? Weighed, you know...
Well, you can take out proximity because that's how you're going to be...
Well, whatever ones are left, right? Okay, whatever ones are left. And then you, well, no, so you start with the radius proximity.
Okay, can we, can we all agree, and of course, this is a work session, but, or is there anybody that does not want to put proximity as starting point?
That's a good point.
So again, I go back to, again, I cannot...
Ms. Young, can you let Ms. Egan finish?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
So...
It's hard to see each other in this...
Taking that into consideration, we're back to square one again, where we have to make sure that we're communicating what our requirements are in that sense to the consultants. So that means, how big does the radius go? How far out do they want to go? Do we want to do one big radius? Or do we want to do several little ones and then clump them? So those are the things that we're going to have to figure out, is how we want to kind of direct them.
And this is just the work session. If we get to a point where we can get direction, that's the purpose of having a special call meeting. We're not giving you any direction now. We are just talking this out, okay? Brainstorming, good at points, so...
So anyway, that, just to...
Why do you get to finish now?
No, no, that was my, so anyway, that was something...
What you were thinking about?
Yes, yes. So that was something. There was like the major criteria that we discussed, proximity and radius and who's in there now. Taken, you know, certain things were weighed maybe a little bit heavier. And then, and then go into our other criteria. And then weigh, and weigh each of those against the schools and see if that works. So that's just a thought.
All right, Ms. Egan, do you want to go?
I just...
We're just brainstorming here. And if anybody has questions about what we're saying, just right now.
I think that when this whole process started, when they came to us and gave us their presentation, they told us that we would have three to five options to choose from. I'm not saying that we need to go to the five, but I think we're kind of restricting ourselves just with the two that we already don't like. Now we're just putting one more in there, the two tweaks. And that doesn't seem like a, I think we need to go at least to do one more in addition. So that gives us the two old ones, better tweaked, and then the two new ones that...
I got another one coming.
Maybe we might go better. This is an approach, because I have another suggestion for another approach, as you all read.
So if we are to do that, when we get to the point, if we are at the point where we can get direction, we're going to need to give specific direction about what we want to see in each of these new plans. We can't just say, give us two more choices. So think about what we would like to see in each of these two. Anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, Dr. Chase, we're just going to have a lot to do.
So I, we have earlier had a discussion about which numbers are we using? Are we going to use four-year-out numbers? Are we going to use current numbers, next year's numbers? I mean, if we have real concerns about accuracy at the school level or at the APU level of these numbers, then that's something we as a board need to decide, maybe with some recommendation from staff. But that's just a question I have. And again, I'm not, I kind of agree with Ms. Egan as far as what radiuses are we talking about, especially when we get to Garrisonville and Rock Hill.
Okay, Ms. Young?
Do you want me to write it down or do you want me to talk?
Well, your questions, we're writing down questions.
Just let me know, let me know where you all want to go. I go back to, again, this criteria. I cannot agree with the radius approach because it does not apply to every single school. It would only, or could only apply to Rockville and/or Garrisonville the way how it's situated right now. I cannot go with Hampton Oaks unless going with what you just said. Look at who's in there now. That doesn't work for my schools. And I want it across the board to be about all the kids. But if we are looking at all the kids, it doesn't work for every single school. So we need to explain, when we say radius approach, how and where.
Could we pull up, could you pull up Hampton Oaks?
It's right there.
It's right there.
Well, can you isolate it for a minute?
Yes, see here, this is Hampton Oaks, so this area. And it has this island, this island.
So if you were to draw a radius...
If I were to throw a radius, everyone would be going to Monqueville, which we have in Plan A.
So that's what I, so that, what I was, what I was saying is, if you drew a radius around Hampton Oaks, those islands would no longer be going to Hampton Oaks. Is that correct?
Yeah, so that's kind of where I was with the radius approach.
And that is what you have...
Pam, I know what you were saying.
You said, who is there now?
Well, that's, that's just a consideration. But I also said, an equal criteria is outliers and islands. So if it's an island, that's going to get pulled out. That's not going to go to that school anyway, because it's an island, right? So, you know, I'm just thinking here, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get to... I'm trying to, orange juice, thank you.
I just wanted them to pull up to just to clarify that I understood what we were talking about.
And the same thing with Park Ridge. If we throw a radius and if we want to keep people where they are going, it's not going to work. Because Park Ridge, you have that island. You draw a radius, they'll all go to Monqueville, which we have in Plan A.
Well, actually, that island at Park Ridge from down in back of the Lowes at Stafford Marketplace, that was only sent to Park Ridge because of the overcrowding. And the intention was that when Monqueville was rebuilt, then they would go to Monqueville. At least that was my recollection of that decision at the time. So there was never any intention that that island would always be at Park Ridge. It was, they were actually moved because the school they were at was overcrowded.
Yeah, and that's all I'm saying as an outsider looking at your data. We look at proximity, none of this would be going to Hampton Oaks or Park Ridge. They should be going to Monqueville.
So in your, I'm sorry, so in your experience, what is the radius effect? What would happen in this case?
What would happen is that all these would, which is happening right now in Plan A and Plan B, all these would have to go to Monqueville. and Plan B, all these would have to go to Moncur. And a lot of this here, from Barrett, would be going to Moncur. And then it would move the people. See, I'm getting emails, like people are saying, for 50 years, this neighborhood has been in such a school, so how can you change me now? Let's go by the radius rule, and yeah, you will be right.
So there are two things I just have a question about with, so all these, all these students who would then go to Moncur, the issue I raised is that changes the program capacity, because so many of those students are, are free lunch, and so I think that needs to be thrown in here as well as a consideration of when we're, the radius may need to be changed because we end up so high in free lunch at Moncur if we use, if we use whatever radius. And then my next question for you is, so what happens to Acquah Harbor when we're using radius? Because Acquah Harbor is...
It's a radius for Moncur.
It's a radius for Moncur.
Right.
It's no radius for Moncur.
Well, as opposed to any school.
Well, there's originally, yeah.
Hampton Oaks is where we have put them in one plan, and it's so big, we're talking about not the projections or anything, we look at current numbers, those numbers are good enough for their own school.
Amen.
There's a site there, I think.
I mean, it's like, I have gone to your staff and come to you more.
Okay, Acquah Harbor gets its own school, we're done.
Hey, why can't, why can't the old Moncur or the Acquah Harbor Elementary?
Acquah Harbor.
I know, right? Acquah Harbor Elementary was the old Moncur.
Acquah Harbor tried that, tried that.
Done a bunch of money and did it.
If I could. There is actually a school site there, is it not? A school site that was offered at 1.2, I mean, way back in the seventies or something. Ms. Hazard, or did you finish, Ms. Young?
Yeah, I just, yeah.
Or Ms. Hazard.
Since I started this, I'm trying to, and the part, how I view this radius approach, I mean, that's just the word we're using. I am viewing that as, there would be, they start at each of the 17 elementary schools, and you move out so far, maybe you fill it to 70 or 75% and see where, where stuff is, and then you will start to see where are the, Mr. Picasso used to call them outliers or the fringes, or I think that's what I used to call them, because then that will begin to show, if we go to a lower number, 70, 75%, when you start with each of the 17, go to, you know, add in that, and then to me, that's when you start to say, now what? But for me, it's somewhat, anyway, that, like I said, you all are the experts, not us, but I'm just trying to say, here is an idea of not going all the way to the 90% or something, let's get to a low number to see, these people really should be here because they look at the school, or their neighborhood is called the same name as the school, or whatever. And then we have to do the hard part, to me, is that next piece. So that's sort of my idea of the radius, you almost go 17 schools and go to, you pick the number, I'm saying 70, 75%, I don't know what that, and then you'll start to see, are there huge neighborhoods on the fringes, are there small ones, and we start to go like that. But at least it will give us an idea, like I said, I am not adopting this approach and saying, I will vote for that, but if we don't see it, we don't know what it looks like. I'm a visual, so that's, like I said, you all are the experts, we can give broad direction in my opinion, that's just a thought.
Will that give us a different plan?
Okay, let me say, just a few things here, okay? When we, when you start drawing the radius around Falmouth and Conway, you know what you're going to do, a lot of overlap.
Right.
A lot of overlap, and there is no way that these neighborhoods would be able to go to Falmouth, no way. They would probably be better off going to Rocky Run or Hardwood, but the problem is, I did get one of the emails where they say, I have to go past two schools. Rocky Run is four, okay, you cannot go there. Hardwood is, has a lower capacity, so even though the numbers may show something, you cannot go there. So, and then, by the way, you have this little, little island here going all the way to Bright, but, so how would that figure out in your radius approach? We can do it, I'm happy to work with that, but as I say, I'll warn you upfront, you won't like it. We have, but that is, there would be more movement than is happening now. I can, I can let you know that, but if you're looking for something that you could explain to people, we could do that, but you are not going to get anything better. You'll end up with more students, uprooting them, a lot of them, we are not doing right now, we're trying to keep as many together as possible. And after getting the human factor that I'm talking about, Plan A and Plan B, I think you should really look at it.
So, yeah, yeah, so once you give us the sort of tweaked Plan A, Plan B, so does that tweaked Plan A, Plan B taken into consideration?
I'm actually to do that. I was not planned.
That was awesome.
Sorry.
My sentiments exactly.
Oh my God.
And then it legs up.
It's so charming, it's...
The clock is back here.
That was awesome.
No, I gotta see if I can bring my brain back.
I'm sorry about that.
So, so with the tweaks that you've done, I mean, one of the things that I've brought up is, when we adjust program capacity for four years out, and we take, say, Hardwood and Rocky Run, and now we look at the fact that they aren't free lunch schools anymore, or class size reduction schools anymore, instead of being at close to 82% capacity, they go down to 77% capacity, and then schools like Conway are going way up in terms of their capacity. So have your tweaks taken any of that into consideration?
What we have done here is, it's a pretty tight area, Falmouth and Conway are pretty tight, and Ferry Farm is going all the way up crossing 95. So we did look at those changes in here, in order to relieve Rocky Run, it seemed like this was the only area that we could work with, and this particular area is high in free lunches. So somebody's got to take it. So it could be Ferry Farm, it could be Falmouth, it could be Conway. So whoever takes it will go high up.
Right, but I'm just, I just am gonna have a problem with leaving a school at 77%, no free lunch kids, and then saying, okay, this other school is now going to be at over 50% free and reduced lunch and close to 90% capacity. That I really have a problem with.
That is fine, you can go take a look at it again.
I have a question, and I think I've asked this before, I'm not sure if I got the answer. What if you had started with Wide Water, Acquah, would you have had the same result?
We could see Wide Water is all the way in the corner, right? And it's, it's up to capacity, I think it's, it's high up there. So if we start from Wide Water, let's say, and I'll just, because I have it handy, I'll just go to Wide Water. So Wide Water is here, and then there is this particular planning unit which could relieve Wide Water, okay? And we could send it to Moncur, but, I mean, I don't know how, and this area is so tight, and trying to keep Acquah Harbor together.
No, no, forget about trying to keep Acquah Harbor together.
No, it's not.
No, no, wait, wait, I want to, I want to make a point, I'm trying, I'm trying to make a point. There's several APUs in Acquah, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what if, like, I'm saying, just move what you need to move, I don't understand what you say, trying to keep Acquah Harbor together. If you have to move, you know, a certain amount, move it and see what happens.
Yes, yes, and that is what...
So you're taking a piece from Wide Water?
Yeah.
Okay, to underpopulate that, then the next step would be Acquah, right?
Yeah, well, the next step would be to look at Hampton Oaks.
Okay.
Or Moncur, Moncur. So let's, let's see, okay? So Wide Water, we need to relieve Wide Water, okay? So what we will do is we'll look at, the only planning unit that seems to be possible, or we could look at the other ones which are possible, and we will have to assign them to the next closest school. And right now, we have island of Hampton Oaks, which is, which is sitting there, we could assign that, but that would not work, so we would have to go to Moncur first, fix those islands, and then see where Moncur is. Okay, Moncur is getting over capacity. So what is next to Moncur? So in many ways, we are doing that. So from Moncur, we say, okay, what's the next school? Because we took these islands, now Hampton Oaks is under capacity, so we need to find the closer areas and give them to Hampton Oaks. So when you say that we haven't looked at that approach, that is exactly what we have done, and while we said that we start from Wilding Creek, but everyone is being affected because we are looking at each and every school, so yeah, that is what we did.
Okay, you'll get the same result, that's all I wanted to know, okay?
If I could just say one thing.
The one thing about the radius approach, I do think we have to keep in mind, and I will say, I don't have the answer to this, so I'm gonna defer, I'm sorry, Barry, this one's yours a little bit, a radius with a circle does not necessarily mean you can drive there. Like, just because, yeah, I think everybody's nodding, but like, you can look here and you can say, oh, well, this is a radius here, and it looks like that they are close to the school, but I can speak to some areas of Hardwood that have like nine or two roads that can get you from out here to here, so I don't know how to overlay that part on it, but I do think the radius has to be somehow taking into, of roads, does that make any sense? Or, and maybe, maybe that was inherent in what we were saying, but I felt like there are some, and maybe of us who, some of us who have some of the rural areas, I don't look at all of us, who probably have some, you can't always get from here to here, it's as the crow flies versus a road, a road driving. So I, I don't know how to incorporate that, but does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes both make sense, because just a radius does not, is not a practical thing to do. What we actually have done is, we drew a half mile walking.
Right.
Where you can actually walk or drive. So we did do that, and I don't have it in this, in this particular demonstration here, but we looked at half a mile walking, driving distance, and I want to say is that each and every attendance, attendance area is in there, except, except Hampton Oaks. Part of Hampton Oaks, that when we went back and we realized, we said, okay, we give them to Park Ridge, but they should have been in Hampton Oaks, but looking at capacity, we couldn't really do, so. Yes, we have actually, so to address...
Sorry, I felt like I had to pass that.
To address that, we, we did look, and we looked at only half a mile, did not look at...
On my, I mean, on these plans.
Yes.
May I ask a question? This is, this is for Scott and for Barry. Maybe not so much Scott. So when we're looking at capacity at all of our schools, you know, we're taking in all of the information that's, you know, the projections and all that stuff, and I know I brought this up before about bus rides, and Barry, you have said that, you know, everything that you've done indicates that there wouldn't be a bus ride that's any longer than Marlborough Point is already sitting on, some of those are 90 minutes, okay? So based on what we do for school capacity, do you run the bus runs or the bus sheets the same way that we do for our schools? So do you look at all of the lots that are being developed at Marlborough Point right now, or Denver Road, and are you generating all of those students that will eventually be on a bus, which will put additional stops on the bus route, thereby extending the time that kids are on a bus?
Yes, and in fact, Marlborough Point has come up this year, and we're looking at options right now to break that up some, because the number of students out there has almost exceeded what we can do with one bus, because currently we are running one bus in there, but we do, as enrollment grows, we keep track of what's, what's going on in there, we get our information directly from the...
So, but, so then, so you can't say with 100% accuracy that the bus rides aren't going to be longer than 90 minutes?
If we're, if we're talking about Marlborough Point, it's...
I'm talking about that whole stretch of Brook Road, where all that, all the development is happening right now, we've accounted for it in our capacity numbers to the schools, have we accounted for it on our buses?
Yeah, well, the, like I was saying, I don't, I can't guarantee anything as far as, you know, with 100% accuracy, but we, we do look at that, and when necessary, we try to put another, put other resources in there to try to pick up the area. You know, the bus route sheets for Marlborough Point show an hour and a half, in actuality, they're probably an hour and five, hour and 10, once, once we go...
So the route to the elementary school gets to be on the bus?
Yeah, oh, it is, it is, and I agree with that, that's a long time to be on the bus.
So we need additional resources, we need more bus drivers, we need more buses, that type of thing, so there's an additional cost there too. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Well, I would hope that these areas that are on the, you know, the fringes, I'll call it, of the county, whether it's, you know, anywhere in the county, that they would absolutely be going to the closest school.
Yes.
Geographically, in terms of the bus ride. I mean...
Right, that's my point about Marlborough Point.
We looked at Marl, excuse me, we had looked at Marlborough Point, and in both Plans A and B, in one plan, it's already going to Staffordville, it was, and in the other plan, we eventually looked at it, and we said, maybe it's a better idea for them to go to Staffordville. We did some drive time analysis, and there's a difference of two miles. So from the furthest point in the Marlborough Point area, going to Stafford is like 9.3 miles, but if you send them to Grafton, it's 11.3, so it's a difference of two miles.
But you're not, but you're not taking into consideration all the additional stops and the development down there. Scott has accounted for it in his school capacity, but we've not accounted for it for bus capacity, so that's, that's my point, and you know, that, that could, that could actually, all those other new stops that are being created now with all this development, could add another 20, 30 minutes to each bus ride, and that's just...
I wouldn't believe Marlborough Point, because I think Marlborough Point, I'm not gonna buy off on Marlborough Point going to Grafton, and I don't think Mrs. Chase is gonna buy off, and I think you're not gonna buy off, and so Marlborough Point is gonna be, is gonna die one way or the other, I think they're gonna end up...
You mean they're gonna end up at Staffordville.
Um, the plan is going to die.
Well, a portion of it.
We need to, both is going to Stafford.
My military sometimes takes me.
Ms. Lee, if, I mean, I think we've had a good idea on the radius, I did offer another suggestion, I'm not saying it's one to use, but I'm sorry for lack of using a kind of crude way of looking at it, I called it the shovel down the road approach, because we have talked for months, maybe even over a year, of that our growth patterns, and it was somewhat helped by when you all did the quadrants, and you even called it quadrants with regions.
For the elementary schools.
For the elementary, when you sort of showed where was growth, and to me, that was helpful, I don't know if it helped the rest of the board, but it was kind of said, wow, I kind of see where our growth areas are, and we sort of said several times, in the north, we need to move from the river east to the west and fill as we go down, sort of the main corridor of 610, and in the west, I mean, in the south, we needed to sort of move from the focal line to the west to the south. I understand the challenge, that then it's the middle, that's, that's the push point. However, it is a growth pattern or a, or something that we, I thought, recognized as a board. Is there some reason to try and do it, in lack of a better way of saying, the shovel, you start with, okay, let's just pick Wide Water, Wide Water, we sort of fill Wide Water, then we move to Burns, and you were saying that, but, but it didn't...
Didn't do the other side.
It didn't kind of go both ways and deal with the middle, and it may not be a different plan, but it is, I just wanted to share, because I just want to share with the board in my email of, here's another plan option to look at it differently, and perhaps it is the same as the radius, but I'm not sure that it is.
Same as what I mentioned.
So, like I said, I call it the shovel approach, you know, I'll call it another way to call it, something else, but I don't know, I'll just call it.
All right, well, you've got some tweaks to A and B, do we want to look at the tweaks to A and B, and then talk about a plan, and other plans? We all want to see at least one, if not two, other plans.
The tweaks we're gonna be, first go through a plan?
Yeah, we'll have a planning and then...
Oh, all right, but the tweaks take into effect the human factor and the responses of the community.
A lot of it, a lot of it, but I do want to say, and I want to warn you upfront, that there are some neighborhoods, we could, we couldn't do what we want to make in there.
Did you reduce the numbers and not add any new neighborhoods?
We reduced.
Okay, did you, so you didn't look at anything else? Did you look at the free and reduced lunch, the numbers?
Okay, let me talk a little bit about free and reduced lunch. We looked at it, and we found that there are some concentrations, okay? There are some up north which are going currently to Hampton Oaks. Now, they will go to Moncur because of proximity. Now, when you look at those numbers, okay, Hampton Oaks used to be a very one school, but now with this proximity and with all this analysis, it's going to be Moncur, just because of proximity and the way we reassign them, it's going to be Moncur. It's not that those people are moving out of the county, they're just going to be assigned to different schools. So that is one concentration that we saw, which you would see the change, and the other one is right next to Rocky Run. And the other one is right next to Rock Hill in Rock Hill's area. The area to the right of I ninety-five, that area has a concentration of free and reduced lunch. Now, that is the area that can be moved to relieve Rock Hill. So who's going to get it? Either Falmouth, Conway, or Ferry Farm. Depending on the proximity, one of them is going to get it. And the way I think it's looking right now, Falmouth is getting it, and so Falmouth is becoming a thirty-one.
How do you always use it like that?
I mean, it's, it's getting more, I'm sorry. It's, it's becoming more. So those are the things. So we, we can look at free and reduced lunch, but I already know that it's going to impact one of these schools.
Well, the big one, the biggest one for me is Moncur, right? Your numbers show, when you adjusted, we would be opening that school at ninety-seven percent capacity. And the problem there is if your numbers are off, we could end up where we don't have space at Moncur to actually take advantage of class size reduction. And, and that's a problem. We don't have a choice, do we? Uh, we can not take the money?
Oh, no, yeah, it's, it's free money. If, but we have, if we don't reduce our class sizes, we don't get the money. This is state money. This isn't federal, um, money.
Yeah, okay, and risk losing more teachers.
Risk Chris.
Correct.
Because we risk, risk not giving these students what they need.
Right.
We, we, we miss having smaller class sizes.
Which goes against everything we've worked on the past four years.
Which is why we can't open it at ninety-seven percent. That's crazy.
That is fine, you can take a look at it, it's just proximity, it's just, oh, I can move, because it's like if you move somebody, then they don't want to be moved. So we can look at it and I can work with the, the subject matter experts and look at it and see what can be done. But I do want to let you know it's a danger.
Yeah.
Moncur, Hampton Oaks, Park Ridge, they are so tight. You move one, you don't, you don't want to move one necessarily, but you do have a constraint that you do not want to open a, a school at that high class.
I have a question, when you mentioned Hampton Oaks. Hampton Oaks under one of these plans is split into four schools.
Yes.
Is that, is that changed in the, um, the radius?
We did look at it and we did some changes, it's just the way Hampton-
How many, how many schools did you, to, back to? That's what it is now. Yeah, I never did understand it. We were trying to keep subdivisions together and one gets divided into four.
It's just the geography of Hampton Oaks, it goes like this, close to Park Ridge, close to what, or close to Barrett. So it's just the geography, but we went and we looked at it.
I know what, we were in it.
Yeah.
We've just commented, we're moving kids out of Park Ridge that are in the Park Ridge subdivision, and then moving kids from Hampton Oaks into the- It's just, a lot of it didn't make sense to me.
It's just again, you know, you're talking about moving from east to west or from west to east. It's, that is what is happening, and they're just adjacent. They are just close to each other. And I tell you, we're neutral. I have no affiliation, any name.
Oh, we're not, we're not suggesting that.
So, so if, if, if it happened, you know, it was primarily to kind of move things and adjust things. But when, again, I go back to the human factor, looked at it, and we said, okay, why do we, we have to get it back to you? So we did.
Could you, could you ask them if they were able to make some changes that we could actually see?
Well, that's what I was just asking somebody. You said you had them, right, the tweaks, you called them to A and B?
I, I do have them.
Can you see actual?
I, I could show it to you, but I haven't yet worked with the, the planning.
What do you, what do you need from them that we can't give?
I mean, I, I could show it to you.
Go ahead and show it.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to see it.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Show, show. You have my permission?
So we'll start with A.
I mean, I'm just curious, just to see, just to kind of get a sense.
So we'll look at A and B.
Okay. So the changes, if you look at, um, Plan A edited, so we took these neighborhood, uh, neighborhoods, which were, we had assigned them to Garrison Grove, and primarily thinking that they are so close, they can do it, okay? So that is what we did. We tweaked that, I think that that was St. George's South and the ones that you talked about. Okay, should I zoom in further, or is that good?
No, you can just tell us the subdivision tool now.
Sure.
That's the one where you split the subdivision that was formerly in Rock Hill and put them back into Rock Hill. I mean, there weren't that many students there.
What, what changed, like what, what were the remains that were removed?
Okay, okay, let's see.
It is part of, um, um, Rock, what is it, St. George's?
These are the, um, St. George's and, um, St. George's, the states is still split, but we have St. George's, um, South. We put it together. So we kept it in Rock Hill. So that was one of the changes that we did. Then I wanted to show you this one, which is called Gables of Augustine. So we took, took care of that in our database, it's called Fairborn Manor. So we went and we assigned it back to Brent, yeah? So while, you know, there was, it was like it's so close to Brent, but keep in mind that these neighborhoods are also close to Brent, but they go to Garrison Grove, so. Just wanted to point that out. Then the changes that we did here. Let me just add my question. Uh, we looked at these neighborhoods. I think this was Master Mills, so.
Opti, OptiFirst Road.
Yeah. And we also looked at Eastern View and we decided to assign them back in Garrison Grove. That's where they were. The big change that we did here. Marlboro Point that we did. Just bear with me, I know you're looking at the screen and I'm moving, so.
Well, actually, if you could look at the subdivisions, that would be-
Yeah.
Direction. Figured out now.
So we took care of these sections, so Popular Hills, Brookridge. And, um, so here Marlboro Point remains in Grafton, and remains in Stafford. Ridge Point, Ridge Point would now remain in Grafton.
Where's the cutoff for, um, each program capacity? To the broader part of the faculty?
Okay, let me, so here. I'm sorry. So here it is, the color. So we got Marlboro Point, but we still have these neighborhoods.
They're going where?
Grafton. No, no, Steph, Steph, back to Steph.
This, this area is going back to Stafford.
Right, okay.
So Marlboro Point is-
Okay, Marlboro Point, yes, yes.
Okay? Then we have, um, here in Grafton and Stafford, a lot of changes in Garrison Grove and Rock Hill, a lot of changes in there. Yeah?
Popular Hills and Brookridge.
And then let me show you some changes back here.
What was the question, sorry? Um, Brookridge and Popular Hills are now slated, were they slated for Grafton?
And Lally.
Right, okay.
This is Lally changes.
So this is Plan A.
Plan A, yeah.
Did it fix Moncur?
Okay, let me show you what we did. Actually, let's just go from one side so we can show you better. This is Plan A and Moncur is- Quay Harpers.
Okay, we, we have a lot of side conversations going on here. If we want to have the presentation, we're gonna need to be quiet so we can hear. Is this everything? Thank you.
And I can, I can show you all these changes and I can also send you a list of changes. I think that would be better. And I can show you, send you the maps of all Plan A edits and additions.
All right, we can do that. We have the highlights for me.
One of the highlights for you was here. This particular area that we had assigned to, um, this area, we gave it back to Garrison Grove. And then we got the neighborhoods together.
That was obviously?
Augustine, yeah, we put Augustine together.
Should they go together? So now Augustine is-
Yeah, Augustine is all together.
And where does it go?
Augustine.
Garrison Grove.
Wait, in B?
A.
Oh, okay. Well, Augustine was all together in A.
Yes, then maybe-
And you didn't make a change, I thought you were on B, I'm sorry.
Okay, then what else we do?
Why don't we can have Doug set up, um, Chris, tell him all that?
Yeah, yeah, so we took care of this Hampton Oaks neighborhood. And we took care of, uh, Park Ridge, put it all together.
Took care of Hampton Oaks, what did you do? You put it all together?
It wasn't for-
There's a small piece though, was it, within one mile?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's this particular area, which is, you know, part of Hampton Oaks going to- So if you look at Hampton Oaks subdivision, it was before, so we basically assigned this area, which was supposed to Park Ridge.
High school.
So there's Hampton, Hampton Run.
And then there was a small area-
Elementary is very small.
Okay, all right, can we, can we just get the highlights of Plan B and then, I think, we can probably try to wrap this up and talk about what we're gonna be looking for and then have some special meeting and-
Thank you.
Get the highlights on B?
Yes.
We still want to see, right?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, so we've got a, just like a simple process of, what changes were made?
Okay, in Plan B, we did the same changes in Plan, uh, A, where we got St. George's Estates and part of St. George's South. We canceled that move and we kept them in Rock Hill. And then we canceled the move where we were moving Sheraton Run and Boy Ridge. Is it Boy or Buick Ridge?
Oh, the, the Ridge.
Yeah. So we canceled that, and that included Buick Ridge, Sheraton's Run, Paperman Forest, Forest, and Love Clear Landing.
They're in Garrison Grove, right?
Okay.
Right now, they're in Garrison Grove.
Yeah, yeah, in Garrison Grove, yeah, so that's-
So they're staying in Garrison Grove.
Yeah. Then we canceled the move, uh, we canceled some APUs back to Park Ridge. That included the neighborhoods of Park Ridge, Meadowford Village, Country Ridge, Oak Ridge South.
I know, you know, Park Ridge?
Yeah. So they were in Park Ridge, so we canceled that.
So, so the other changes that you made?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Then we got, um, APUs three sixteen and three sixteen. We, um, took them from Park Ridge and to, sent them to Barrett. And part of Hampton Oaks was affected. Then we canceled the move of APU one eighty-three, so Hampton Oaks, that affected the Hampton Oaks neighborhood. We canceled the move of some APUs from Stafford. So Crow's Nest Harbor, Michael Brook Estates, Beckstreet Manor, Mount Hope Estates, Harvard T. Johnson Estate, Brookley and, um, Mount Hope Crossing, estate of the, uh, England Estates and Grove Estates. They all stay in Stafford, so we canceled that move. Then from Brent to Winding Creek, we canceled that. There were Center Court, Presidential, Sycamore Grove, Lake Estates, Kane subdivision. We canceled that, so they stay where they are. Augustine North in Plan B, Augustine North, I believe, was, uh, split. So we canceled that move to keep it together via Augustine North and Rolling Meadows, and they stay in Moncur Creek. Okay? Then we canceled the move of some APUs, which affected the neighborhoods of Beaver Lodge, Walnut Ridge, Graceland Estates, Walnut Ridge Estates. And there are quite a few, Stafford Manor, Dillon Division. So we canceled that move. Then we canceled the move of, uh, the Estates and Rosehill Farms. So there was some concern, so we canceled that move. Then we moved to Moncur.
Can you click okay? I got it screwed, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. I'll just zoom in so whoever's seeing this can get this. Then we moved APU two point five, uh, two oh five point one to Moncur. So Hampton Run, Firepoint, GST subdivision. And then we canceled the move of Ridge Point.
Has anyone had a Clearview Heights in any of this? Because I've received-
Which one?
Clearview Heights, I received a lot of emails about that. And I've heard comments that, since then, from-
Oh, Clearview Heights, uh, no, Clearview slash Colonial Heights. Yeah, we canceled that move, which was from Ferry Farm to Conway. We canceled that.
Uh, well, Clearview Heights goes to Falmouth currently, so I just didn't know whether there's gonna be a change made to that, because I received-
Are you in A and B, or you're talking about pretty?
In both, in both A and B, it went to Conway. And so we received a lot of human calls, and I just didn't know whether anything had been changed.
I, I think I know where that is, but we, we just-
Is that the one that's passing?
Yeah, it goes, it's- Yeah, it goes, it has to drive past Fallon to get to Conway. It's going three miles instead of a mile and a half.
Well, and ironically, it's socio-economically an advantage to leave that school.
To leave it there, yeah, because it balance.
Because that, that they have, you know, they can even give it some support to that school and they've always been there and it's the closest school. Something to look out on the next.
Right, I just didn't know whether anything happened.
In Plan, but Clearview Colonial Heights goes.
Is this the added, the two thousand number?
Right, that's what she said.
What street names have you got? Is that Clearview Heights?
It is Clearview Heights. Clearview Heights.
It's later to go to Conway.
Hold on, no, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. So Ferry Farm Plan A has from Conway, Clearview Colonial Heights. Right here.
Right.
To Ferry Farm, so what hap?
It's a different Clearview.
Is it a different Clearview Heights?
It's gotta be a different.
Okay. Yeah.
So that's Clearview, so in this plan, in both plans, it's going to.
In Plan B, it is going to.
And in Plan A, it's.
In Plan A, I have. I'll just quickly look at.
You have it right now going to Conway.
Conway, this is Plan.
Leaving Fallon.
No, this used to be in Fallon.
Is it this year?
It's two years.
We have none. That's what they're asking, that's what the clients, the constituents are asking.
You wanted to stay in Fallon.
Because.
I have seen that email.
I have, I have received.
We have several.
Quite a few emails asking for that, so I just didn't know whether that had been.
I have no constituents there, but I see a good benefit to Fallon to.
Well, no, there are emails that said, because they didn't wanna leave because it makes the school a higher, uh, pretty reduced much. And they were adamant upon it to stay because they said it helps the school to do it.
We have addressed a lot of officials in these plans, but whatever is there.
And this is something you would have no idea, just looking at the numbers and the geology. Well, but that's, I mean, part of it is, you don't know how much credibility you put in, what comes in, but it's the human factor when you check it out and look at the history. And, you know, with, with the school, and there were a couple of those for Rocky Run as well, because I know there were subdivisions that in the past were. Do not touch.
Rocky Run, you know, was the reverse of this one.
Needs these, these subdivisions.
Just another, um, I'm assuming that you got a copy of the, the plan that was generated by, by a constituent?
Yes, yes.
Were you able to look at that and was, was there some benefit to taking what she did and applying it to another option?
Yes, like I said, we have looked at every suggestion and I did look at Plan 2.0 plus. And what it does, of course, is one of the things that it suggests is splitting planning units, which we do not have the authority to do. And then it does send some of the areas, the items we talked about. It sends one of them back to Hampton Oaks. And if we go back to the radius approach or we look at whatever, they should really be going to Montour. But once again, that's another way to look at it. And that plan also takes into consideration some of the comments that we have heard and we have already incorporated them. So the biggest thing for us was that it was planned.
I didn't hear anything about Amy Clay.
Oh, yes, yes, suggestions of Amy Clay, because they're very close to Winding Creek as well. We, we did look at Amy Clay, and if we go the radius approach. Actually. Actually. Parkridge, Parkridge will be closer. But regardless of all that, it's just the way Winding Creek is, even if we don't look at projection numbers. No matter, we look at east-west approach, south approach, we look at the radius approach, Winding Creek is four. Somebody is cutting. And Amy Clay happens to be one of those neighborhoods which is closer. It's on the boundary, so basically, we were not able to address it.
Were you sending them here?
In one plan, we are sending them to Garrisonville, but really the ones which were really smart, so we have that in mind. All right, um, can we get these? One, two, nine hundred, that's about the plan, 2.0. We just look at it, and it does not relieve Montour, so Montour would still be at ninety-five percent open. It does not relieve burns, which would be up to a high capacity. So we have looked at those. And I know the, and I know the lady who did it, she was able to focus on a few, I do know that. But one was splitting, like I said, in those planning units.
It was only two planning units that were split.
Yeah, two or one. We don't have the authority to do.
Forty-two kids move because they can walk to.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and I, I completely appreciate that, but it's just that it does require splitting of that unit, which I don't have the authority.
I understand that, but we do, so the hundred people might take that to be part of the option.
That is, that one looks a little, yeah, I mean, I don't want to say.
Okay, all right.
But I do want to say that Montour, it does not relieve Montour. It does not really. No, even, even when we, yeah, when we split that, let's keep the questions from the board at this point. This is.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Part of my fault, gotcha.
Are there, are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. Um, is there any, um, thoughts about what we wanna look at in the additional plan or plans that we're gonna be requesting?
Well, if, first of all, for, for even with these tweaks, if we're taking seventy-two students or seventy-five students out of the Ferry Farm capacity, that has to be dealt with in both plans, if we as a board are gonna vote to do that, and we have not. But if, if that's the case, then there's gonna have to be more tweaks in order to reduce the capacity at Ferry Farm, right?
Yes, with, with three classrooms moved up from the basement. It's, you know, the estimation is twenty-six times three, so the new capacity for Ferry Farm program capacity would be seven twenty-two. Um, which would have, both Plan A and Plan B would have it open at a hundred plus and then a hundred and ten plus. So, um, you know, that's, that's, that's not gonna, that's a non-starter for me.
Wait, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
If, if we're going to, if we're gonna go ahead and plan for the renovation of Ferry Farm, we're gonna be getting trailers anyway, is that right?
I, right now.
We're not gonna have a fully.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be moved for the renovation.
Absolutely.
So what, what about just maybe, you know, moving, moving that schedule up a little bit and getting trailers there so that they can still be part of it? This way, they've already been registered, they have a place to go, we don't have to monkey around with it again the next time. When, when it's done. The problem with the I R D is we have no commitment from across the street about anything.
Nothing, right now, nothing's going on.
Not even the.
The money's not there, nothing, nothing is going on right now, so, so for all intents and purposes, Ferry Farm is not getting it done.
It's not, they're, they're not even gonna put it on their general.
So, you know, I, I just can't fight it. So anyways, so that, that's the thinking, that's the issue.
The irony is that what we're talking about in the basement, what our proposal was and what we asked the supervisors to approve, in using carryover funds and other money from other projects that we had planned, so we're not asking for any additional money for redoing the, you know, the, the problems in the basement and the heat, I mean, not the heat, the, the air quality.
Right, yeah, but that's another whole issue by itself.
Well, but, but it, but it's related because if we can't do it, then we have to reduce the capacity of the school by seventy-eight schools.
Because we have to move those classes out of the basement.
We can't, we can't, unconscionably have classes.
Yeah, right.
It's a resource.
So, you know, that's one thing, I, I just, just since I wanna keep quiet after this, so I think Marlboro Point was.
Promise?
Marlboro Point was an issue with me as well, um, I just, so.
And they've done that in both plans.
They've done that in both plans, so, so that's, so that's, so that's a good deal. Yeah, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that for now.
I just wanna say one thing, you know, if you change the program capacity again, changes.
Yes.
Yes, it does, yes, we know that, we know that.
But what, what can we do? If that's, if we can't be assigning students to that school, which impact schools, you know, all the way across the board, if we're not gonna be able to accommodate them that, because that would create a need to do this again, which I'm sure nobody wants to engage in.
And as, and as it is right now, even if the team's been working hard on the plans, you know, Mr. Haran, the rest of them, with the, with, it's still gonna be an issue for the next two, three years. Could be two years, up to two years to have the basement ready. So, I mean, for the next two years, you still are gonna have a program capacity, you know, a program capacity of seven twenty-two, unless they put a whole bunch of trailers on the back, like you mentioned. But I mean, so I'm just saying, for the next two years, this can't, this is still gonna be an issue.
Madam Chair, yes, I have a comment. Um, if we are going to give direction, we need to have two plans, in another word, one including the seventy-eight and one excluding it. Just in case the board supervisor says, yes, you know, it's going through, we have that plan ready. Because if we set the plan up excluding them, and the next thing you know, they're like, hey, no, we always meant to pay for it, what are y'all doing? Um, we would have that ready. So, with and without. If we are going, send them back to the drawing board.
Is that, is that agreeable?
Yeah, I, I.
Means we'll be asking for two plans in addition to these, where these are still under consideration, you know, at the revisions to these. And we will need to get copies of these.
Well, personally, I mean, I, I think the 2.0 has a lot of merit to it, and I think it's, I think it impacts a lot less. And I think that if it's something that a consultant can, can use as a, as a starting point for an additional option, I would like to say.
I would want to once again say that I have looked at Plan 2.0 in great detail. I've actually recreated it, and of course, without splitting the planning units, I've recreated it and it has some good things. But it still does not help Montour.
Okay, so, so can we use that as a basis to help Montour and then, and then assume?
We need a vote on that.
Can I finish my thought, please?
Yeah.
And assume that we're gonna have a discussion about maybe splitting two planning units in order to not impact as many children? I just want, I just want to see a scenario.
Absolutely, absolutely, and what it does is, it's actually very well laid, I think, forward. But it goes back and says, I'll do this, I'll do that, so which means burns does not get any early. Burns does not, it looks at Parkridge, it looks at Hampton Oaks. And some of the things, yeah, we can definitely do, put in Parkridge together. And part of Hampton Oaks, or part of Parkridge, it's ending to Hampton Oaks. And if you go by any, by your radius rule or by east west, that would happen to Montour. I mean, I'm.
Or you can, you can bring that up as a motion when we have the meeting, because we're not given any direction at this point. That's something that you could bring up and see what the, what the board is.
I understand.
Same thing with you, Ms. Young, if you wanna make a motion to have two plans. You know, we're not at that point now, we're still under the, the work session having a discussion. Is there any other discussion we wanna have before we?
Um, I guess the other thing.
End the work session.
Other things that have come up in this discussion that are we, aren't we doing? There was some concern about the accuracy of the four-year projections for APUs. And so do we wanna be using four-year projections or numbers, or do we wanna be using current numbers, next year's numbers?
I'll start with you. I can see those just dots going.
So the, the question was just, we, we have.
Oh, yeah.
A point that has been raised. There is some.
Clarity?
Right, the, the point, a point that was raised earlier was, some people are looking at these APUs, looking at subdivisions that are completely established and built out, and they are questioning whether indeed you will see that much growth in four years in those subdivisions. Now, I don't know whether that's a valid point or not, I, I, so the question is, should we be using the projection numbers from four years out for these plans? Or should we be using the numbers that, that are current? And, and I don't, I, 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 I mean, I would probably ask for a recommendation for that myself, but.
I, I would go with the individuals that have the knowledge and have done the work. And I'll leave it up to the consultants and the individuals that, um, does the work in the past and, um, hey, it's, it's on that.
Okay, now I have a piggyback question for that, what we wanna consider, and that's subdivisions that are not built out at this point. You know, if there are no houses, you know, on the ground, and they're in the projections.
I'd like to exclude them four years out. Like the ones that are built out and, um, are prescribed and they know that they're gonna have individuals in them, that should be part of the projection, but not the ones that are not built out. I would exclude those.
The ones that are on the books, but not.
Not built out, I would exclude those. But they did say, when my question arose, that they did not put those in the plans. They put them at the end, which is in two thousand.
I would recommend we stay with what we produced. And we, and I think President said during the high school, we look forward at a target date, and I think the four-year target date is very appropriate. And I think we should not change that staff position.
Of course, we did have, we had, we had a nice option.
Dr. Kizner and I might have a different.
For the community, we had the option that you would stay. That helped a lot with the high schools, if you were already there.
That's my opinion, we should, I think we should stay with the four-year look, and we're very confident.
If you're comfortable with those numbers, even though, that's all I'm asking, yep.
Well, I, I'm concerned about, speaking for me, giving, you know, I'll just call it priority to people that aren't even here over our current residents, I have concern about that in terms of.
We, we addressed that with the high school redistricting too, which I, I liked, so.
But, but we addressed that, you know, we did address it, and I think what Scott's saying, he's recommending we just use the numbers that they are now, which doesn't really address it.
But I'll, I'll make one comment on that. I believe, well, may have misheard, when we started our discussion today, I thought we said something that we were going to, um, ask or have Matt and Scott look back on the planning units. Is there anything else in your professional opinion that needs to be changed? I thought that was our first discussion. If, and we talked about, I got the three week, maybe I got lost in this, but, you know, if we believe that it is, um, to give you all that opportunity to look at the APUs, and you may come back and say, they are perfect, or some of them are a little bit big, maybe I can, a few of them need to be changed. I'm willing to, to give you all that time. I believe that the four-year is the way we have to go, because in, if we are growing one percent about every year in elementary school, we gotta have that in there, because then that's just not accurate to me, to say to our constituents. I don't have a lot that I can say on these two tweaked plans, because, sorry, we haven't even hit some of the area, we didn't even get as far to the left to see Hartwood and that, and I'm not saying that, you know, but we do look to our, um, I'm gonna have to see those in a printout, some kind of form, um, to be able to comment more. But if we can say that those plans, the ones that, these are plans A and B, taking into consideration comments received from the public, I believe that's a great name for Plan A and B. And I, I think that that's very helpful to us, whether I would switch stuff, I, I, I'll, I'll look at them, but I, I gotta see them, I'm a visual. But with regard to the planning, I, I think the four-year needs to be there, but I would want to provide, if, if staff wants to, just to do another relook at the APUs and making sure, and for me, what would be helpful, but I said this on Tuesday night, I know we've used hashtag, maybe figure out, figure out some other thing, of not yet built neighborhoods be in some color stars, I don't know, some other way, because I think that gives the board a few more tools in the toolbox of, gosh, if I have to pick between two neighborhoods, if one is in whatever, bold or, or whatever, I might be more willing to move a neighborhood that is not here yet or has two children in it as opposed to those. So I don't know how that map can work, so that may go to the APU division. So I don't know how that map can work, so that may go to the APU division.
Turn the blacks, turn the blacks so that they're prominent on the map, so that we can see it.
Does that make sense, what I'm saying of the APUs? And if that is not doable, tell us, if that is.
Well, I, I would say I'm concerned that if we take the time to go back and QC even, even further the APU, then we have to start again, and it will push, push us outside of your windows of trying to target some decision. Uh, it's just my opinion, I think it will push it, and we'll be entering into May.
That's, that's, that's one, but, but what about, and, and what about marking on the map where the subdivisions don't exist yet?
No, no, I think, I think that's certainly doable.
But, but my concern about that, I'm just, just to the board, is will we inadvertently be creating islands again?
I, I, I think there's a, a good chance of that. You'll, you'll have some developments that, um, are not started. But, I mean, that's a fair, I think that's a fair request, to be able to show developments that haven't even started, that are approved, that haven't started, you know, to, to be able to highlight those for use. I think, I think that's fair and reasonable.
But just know that those developments that are not building yet, but are approved, are, are implemented in, or are captured as part of the projections for the planning unit that they're within. So if the thought, any change to any planning unit at this point, to have data integrity result in the whole projection models, they need to be reran. So that's why there's not, not any time to change.
Well, it could also result in imbalance in the, the students on the ground in the schools, though. I mean, if we're projecting a high number of students to come out of a particular development that's not developed yet, and they're included in the calculations, then until they actually come into the schools, there's going to be.
And that's why looking at the four-year mark, you know, looking down to the future, you try to capture that, it's, it needs to be.
And I wanted to throw one other thing out that Wendy, we haven't talked about, which is special ed. Um, and that special ed could change the capacity of the schools as we have them, if that original plan of yours is, if we're going back to what, leaving it the way it is, going with your Plan One, going with whatever you tweaked.
The one, the one, uh, the one thing that came up, and I, I quickly spoke with Wendy after the last board meeting, was the, uh, the ABS, um, I'm sorry, EBS, the Emotional Behavioral Support. Those, there, there seemed to have been some, um, talk about how it's very beneficial to keep the two EBS classrooms in each school. And, um, so I just, that was one thing that popped up, that I wanted to.
So you have something you're going to tell us about?
I was going to say, it was a pleasure, the board.
I'm prepared to provide you with an alternative.
Irene, do you have a question?
Yes, regarding the special ed program. Um, so if I understand it correctly, there have been some of these, these kids who have been in the program for several years, who've already been moved a few times. How are we addressing that, number one? And number two, some of these kids who have an IEP, whose accommodation is keeping a consistent environment as, as an accommodation, if they've already been moved once or twice, aren't we getting, aren't we in violation of the accommodation in the IEP for keeping things kind of familiar to the student?
So I would say, no, we're not in a violation of keeping their school consistent, because actually there is a Virginia code and a federal code for student placement, and it falls under the placement section of IDEA. Uh, and one of the priorities is that they're in their neighborhood school when possible. So we keep consistent their classroom routines, what they have accessible for them for accommodations. But a move like this with seventeen schools, and I tried to put an outline at the bottom for you all of what did we consider? Because Mrs. Decatur's comment, I think, at Tuesday's work session was do what, when, where, and how. So I will be very upfront with you that I don't have the data on how many times children have moved through prior redistrictings. Um, I have talked with some of our staff on when did kids move, and I know there's a particular email I received from a parent, that their child had moved four or five previous times. When I look specifically at that child's history and their enrollment history through the database I can access for students with disabilities and their IP's, I can track that that child was moved a lot for early childhood special ed, but their program has remained the same from K through four. So when you tap, factor in that human component, which, when we initially looked at column two, we were looking at proximity to try to stay similar to the seventeen elementaries, because I saw this as an opportunity for us to really meet that first criteria, that we try to get some of these students back closer to their neighborhood schools. So I can give you specific cases where we have kids that are very similar to what Mrs. Healy has described. Kids that are moving or driving by four schools before they get to an attending school, because that's where we have a program available. And over time, programs became available only on schools that were open, because we've reached a point like a winding creek. We wouldn't place a new program there because they're already at capacity. So we skipped that school as an, as an opportunity to place a program. So what you see in the middle was our first proposal, well, first of all, let me start at the beginning. That first proposal is where we have our options, where kids are right now. So our current kids and where they're placed. The middle option was what we proposed to the public, that first open, uh, town hall meeting, that, that's when that data. And at the bottom, you'll see, it was based on proximity, it was based on trying to double programs, where we could double programs, knowing that if we have a odd number of programs, you can't double. You're either going to leave them as a single, or you're going to triple. So that's a different issue, I think, tripling a program. And then limiting the amount of programs in an option. So when Matt and I first worked together with all of the program data, looking at every low incidence program, the, the most glaring one was Mary Foreman Staffordell. Staffordell would have received seven programs, only looking at one factor of proximity. She would have had an EBS program, Intellectual Disabilities or Learning Support Program, one and two, and four autism programs. That's significant for, as far as resources for one school. In addition, we considered the factor of you're moving in fifty-six to seventy kids, depending on how many children are in those classrooms, and you're displacing potentially a hundred and fifteen general ed kids. So I was trying to look at both factors of what we're doing for every child. Not one or two individual or one or two specific programs, but every program. So we quickly thought, Mary can't do seven self-contained programs in her building. So we limited the number of self-contained, and then the last thing we did was try to think through the resources, which included transportation and routing, et cetera. So that was option two. If you look at option three, that's where we take into consideration conversations. I've had one-on-one with teachers, with administrators. We've had probably twenty emails in total from parents and teachers and some administrators over option two. So twenty out of about three hundred and fifty-nine kids and out of forty-two programs.
Okay, so I guess my next question is, and this is, this is sound ridiculous, but I'm going to ask it anyway.
Okay.
Um, does, do any of the options for redistricting work on keeping the special ed classes where they're at? And I know people are going to shiver over that, but I'm just taking into account just consistency and familiarity and all that other stuff. Is it possible to keep the special ed classes where they're at now and implement the rest of the redistricting around special ed?
I think we can do one, two, or three. One hits exactly what you said, option one. We keep them where they are and you guys move on. I just want to make sure we understand that, in my view, and in my position, I wanted us to make sure we were considering our students with disabilities the same way we're considering every other student. And we're not excluding them from the opportunity to attend their neighborhood school when possible. With the caveat of that's not always possible. Because we only have three M.D. programs. We're never going to be able to get all of those students in their neighborhood school because they're so scattered in our division.
Right. And the reason that I'm asking this is because a lot of the emails that I've read, and some of the phone calls that I've gotten from our special ed parents, have been like, look, if, if it's not broke, don't fix it. We, we have a, a relationship with our administration in our school. Yes, we have to drive a lot further to get to Staffordell or to get to here or there, but we're happy here, and we're getting the services that we, that we need and require. So I just want the board to kind of take that into consideration as we go forward.
I just think you're probably hearing that from every parent. And I, and I've heard, like, our special ed teachers want to stay in their school, their families want to stay in their school, the same as your general ed parents. And I do think, you know, there is a difference, because the kids have disabilities and they have some different other considerations for keeping that routine and that familiarity. If our staff move, I would argue with you, they're going to be able to keep that. But our staff also have an option of not moving. We can make any one of these options work.
A question, about Wendy, and I think you answered it, so thank you very much for going back. You all enjoy this work. So the program follow the kids, or does the kids follow the program?
I need a little bit more clarity than that.
The program follows the kids, I think, the way you're. A child's IEP decides what program the child needs.
Yes, okay.
So if a child moves from school A to B, then the program, then that child has to have services.
So the program will follow where the kid goes?
Yeah.
So the, the, the service follows the kid, so that?
But historically, what happens is you place programs in different locations. Then you have a child that's either identified or moves into the community with that disability. Then you, if, in a perfect world, we would have seventeen similar programs at every school.
Every school, that's, that's what I was going.
But that's not happening.
We can't, because we don't have.
So, yeah, so what, what Wendy did was look at the intent of the law, which is like all children, you want this. And this is what you guys understandably struggle with, you want children to be as close as possible to their non-disabled peers, their neighborhoods, and so on. And, and that's what she did in option two. Option three, she began to get feedback. And to go to Irene's question, what's not even in any of these options is some individual children that we've talked about based on comments, that we think we could accommodate them in their current school. So we're, the human, I like that we've.
The human factor.
Human factor. So there was, there were at least two that we've talked about that, out of the nineteen. So option two, we feel like if we were going to build Stafford Public School for the first time, this would have been the best place for the schools, I mean, for the programs. And then the third option is a.
Some movement.
Some movement based on the feedback we've received.
Okay, great.
So, so we as a board, I think, this is my, you know, my, what is worth, my opinion, is we need to pick one of these plans, and then we need to stick with that plan, because every time we change, it changes program capacity at all the schools. So we, we need to actually probably take a vote and then stick to that vote, because staff can't keep having to, and the consultants can't keep having to completely change program capacity every, you know, whatever. So that, this is my own.
And, and to follow up on your question, you can't vote on this yet until.
No, no, it needs to be.
This is how, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Other way.
But we do need to give direction to the consultant, what's the direction on the plans that we want to become upward, as to what to take into consideration, where the special education classes will be.
So, Madam Chair, even though we, at this, we cannot take a, a vote right now.
Well, we have a special call meeting.
We have a special call meeting where we can, we can address, or we can have poll, straw poll, to give them, well, they're leaving as well, so.
Oh, we can get back with them.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't think they're going to start working on it this afternoon. Maybe tomorrow morning.
Tonight, tonight.
Tonight, tonight.
We'll get you, we'll get.
Saturday night on Instagram.
We got, but of course, nobody's going to be doing anything tomorrow evening, right?
What's football?
Super Bowl.
I just want to make sure the board understands, any change in the programs, the program placement, has an effect on the capacity, which inherently could affect the proposed plan.
That's, okay, so which means.
That's why we said we had to include it. All right, do we have any more comments? I'd suggest that we take a break before we have our, our meeting, and we, we can get the word back to you later today. Foreman, here. But thank you so much. Does anybody have anything for the consultants before we thank you, dismiss them, if we get an early release? Thank you so much, and, and you're going to share your plans, so we can have that, and we'll put that on the website for everybody to share.
Mrs. Healy, we would like to have the subject matter experts review those, if, if the board chooses, so that we can make sure that they're.
Well, we can have them review, but now that, now that we've talked about them, I think the community's going to have an interest. So we could just put them up, that these were what was, this, this was presented, or, or maybe not presented, it was pulled out.
Who are the subject matter experts?
It's transportation, Matt and I, transportation, Wendy, from special ed, and then we invited county planning, county GIS. Um, we just want to make sure that, um, obviously by putting more plans out there for consideration, it will cause, we, we could just.
No, we're not presenting, yeah, we're not presenting it as a plan, we're just presenting it as, as these were revisions that the consultants have, are, have considered in response to the community.
Put a disclaimer on it, just say that these are just preliminary.
Right.
So there was still.
Yes, that's right.
Something happened.
But now that it's been presented, I think we have an obligation to put them out there.
I agree with you. Yes.
And then you do what you want.